Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 8th, 2024 Farmington School Board meeting. We actually already started earlier this evening in non-public. So we are just starting the public portion of our meeting. And if everybody would please join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public participation? I'll jump at once. Everybody had a good holiday. It's my contribution to public participation. Back in action. Moving on to minutes.
I think someone's at the door.
Oh.
Never mind.
Oh, right, I forgot Joel's on the phone. Yeah. Sorry, Joel, I forgot you.
That's okay.
Um. We have Joel joining us via phone and Sharon is excused for the evening. She's in a much nicer place than we are. But Joel, are you alone?
Yes, I am.
Alrighty. So we are at minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 17th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 17th. Public session, non-public session one, non-public session two, non-public session three, non-public session four, and non-public session five.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second.
There.
Oh, you weren't there.
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's alright. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
Alright. And June 24th?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes of June 24th, 2024, public session, non-public session one, two, and three as written.
Second? Any discussion?
Uh, I just, I was in attendance for all of it except for non-public session three, so I'll just have to abstain from that.
Okay.
But I did review them.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, with the exception of non-public three, Patty abstain for me.
And June 27th?
I'll make a motion to up, uh, accept the minutes of June 27th, 2024, public session and non-public session one as written.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Alright. We are on to reports. I'd like to, at this time, introduce our new curriculum director, Dr. Kimberly Sanborn McGlinchey. She's joining us for her first meeting. Um, and I wasn't sure, I know there's a report in here, but I, if you want to speak to that?
Sure. Um, so thank you all very much. I'm excited to be here. Looking forward to, um, the great work we're gonna do here in Farmington. Really excited about it. I'm just gonna give you some updates in terms of, you know, what my first five days, the president, the first thirty days. Um, have been like, and it's a little bit like drinking from a fire hose. But, um, I had three sort of goals, um, for this new period. Um, and I was waiting for Colleen to come back to add to my title work. But, um, goal one was information gathering. So just, you know, being out there and talking to people, um, taking notes, filling in what people's needs are, things like that. Um, and then I did work on the Title II and Title IV, funding allocation and programming for 2024, 2025, making sure I understood what was written in those grants, uh, making sure that the programming that was written into those grants, that people were registered, paid for, all of those good things. And fortunately for me, I think I was left with a pretty, um, clear pathway forward. Um, and then my third goal was principal partnerships. So really making sure that, um, I understand what's going on at the building level, what they need from me, um, all of those good things. So I guess I'll just highlight a couple things. When I met with each building leader, I, I had them identify some of their needs. Um, and at the high school, uh, one of the things that was brought up right away was they were working on a new schedule in order to, um, accommodate teacher team time, which is really hard to get at the high school level. Um, the way high school schedules work, in order to get that PLC time and really focus on what you need to focus on, it's tricky. So there is a innovative schedule that is being put together. I gave them some feedback, um, and, and just trying to make sure that that is a good outcome. Another thing they're working on is a stronger advisory curriculum. And you can use advisory, you know, to, um, to have it really be like agenda, every day is the same. Or you can, if you're trying to build culture and community, you can also include some fun things. So we talked a little bit about how would we include like Fun Fridays? Um, maybe do a, um, theme every month. And on Fridays have built, hand that to the teacher, here, this is what the whole school's doing. We're coming up with, you know, every advisory is gonna, you know, set their norms. What, what, what do they care about in this community? And then we have building level norms. So different activities there. There's still quite a bit of needs in terms of employment. So, uh, there's a consumer science, media, music, health, teacher science, social studies, and two school counselors that, um, we're needing. So there's that, that was, um, part of their needs. And then utilizing Edmentum, we have 24 contracts and making sure that those contracts are getting to the kids that really need it. Middle school is looking great. Want to focus on some content area writing. And then a new program that kind of aligns with the whole freshman, um, buildup and being successful in high school called Gear Up. And I just learned about it today. It's a program that runs grade six through eight for high school success. And then next year it would bump up to ninth grade. So that is something that I think might be coming to fruition. And then, um, for the elementary school, all the responsive classrooms, um, have been set. The teachers are all set. Their concern was making sure that the DIBELS and STAR testing dates were set. Uh, and there's a new math coaching program called Coachly that we've paid for that is gonna be working with math teachers virtually and in person. So there's some good things happening there, and I'm not gonna take up all the time here. Uh, Title II, reviewed that, have been in touch with DOE, making sure that's all set. Same with Title IV. Um, there's some ideas on how to spend that money. And one of them sort of connects with the REC program that's here, uh, in making sure we have some good enrichment. I put a link, uh, did you get the shared doc or the printed doc?
Yep, under the Title IV.
So there's a link to, um, a program that's for a Title I school in Portsmouth called New Franklin. And they call it the MC3 program. But you can get ideas from it in terms of what might it look like? And just speaking with the REC people earlier, the schedules are really similar. Um, and how can we make sure that if the REC program can only handle X number of kids, how do we have our own programming which can be paid for through Title IV? And I did check with DOE on that. So there's that. Let's see. What else? Principal partnerships, I'm looking to build strong communication channels, setting up weekly meetings with a running agenda, visible leadership, being out there. I think I'm probably going to get a satellite office at the high school so I can be supportive and be there, um, as often as possible to help with teacher, um, resource needs, but also if they need, you know, someone to do evaluations or be in the classroom. Um, and just getting to know students and what their likes and needs are. Our frontline program is, is good in terms of it's there, but we need to roll it out. So that's something that needs to be done. And going to start in the fall, a professional practices and PD bulletin. So a monthly newsletter with important information for staff in regards to professional programming, professional development and opportunities. Maybe we can highlight teachers or things that are innovative. Just making sure that that gets out there so that we can encourage teachers to take advantage of professional growth. Um, even if it's in-house things we're offering with no cost, maybe just credits or something. And then the new teacher, um, program and the mentoring program. Um, just making sure that we communicate with them as consistently as possible. And I guess one other thing I'll mention is the professional development master plan. I guess has been given the seal of approval from the committee. I don't know exactly who was on that committee, except they know Giselle was. And we need to, I shared it with the building leaders and they're not familiar with it. So make, Giselle was, but she was the only one, no one else had seen it. So making sure we set aside some time to make sure all of your building admin know what's in here and what's expected because it's, it's approved and it, the draft stamp is gone. So I'm assuming it's ready to go.
Yeah, I was gonna say a month or two ago.
So it was probably like the end of the school year, yeah.
Yeah, right at the end of the school year.
It was nearing the end of the year, um, and it came before the board. We had reviewed it, made some changes. Um, Sharon and you had found a lot, so we had made some changes. And then, um, I think it was the last meeting or the meeting before Kathleen had said that it went to this state and had been.
Yeah, like approved, so we were good to go. So that would make sense. So with like the end of the school year and then the vacation and the timing, so this would be perfect timing to make sure that that gets out, yeah.
Absolutely. And make sure that the admin knows what the expectations are and all of those good things. Uh, same with the mentor program. I know, um, Jim's been working on this, so I'm not gonna steal his sunshine. Um, yeah, so that's what I've been up to.
That's a busy five days. Does anybody have any questions for Kim following up? Joel, you good? He's still there, right?
No, sorry, I had myself one, you got mine.
You're welcome.
One done. Alright, check it off the list. Student services.
Uh, sorry, one more.
Oh.
Patty, just, or I don't know Patty or Jim, can we just update the, um, Jess had pointed out?
Oh, yeah, the letterhead.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a small, like.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Hello.
Alright, uh, you have my report in your board folder. So if you want to take a moment to review the statistics and ask any questions you might have from that.
Is the out of district placement number?
Is higher.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's why I asked her with the explanation that we had. Those impacts.
When?
What is it generally? Um, I, I think it's been around eight or nine probably per se here. Okay.
Um, were those students that were newly identified or new to the district?
Probably if we, we should probably have a non-public to, if you would like to dig deeper.
Okay. Yep. Oh, yeah, no, I just didn't know if it was.
There's no easy way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, um, then in terms of activities, uh, we continue to prepare for the program approval of general supervision, uh, which is the, uh, monitoring Department of Ed does, um, for special education programs. We are up for this fall, so, um, things are starting now, things already have started and, um, will really be intense, I think, during the fall and then be done. Um, we did take Department of Ed up on their offer to do a cause analysis session, which was wonderful, be a nice practice section from the district to attend, um, to discuss our results, um, with our students that are identified. And from that, um, we identified, uh, looking at some professional development, um, for the district teachers and inclusion practices. Um, and the provider from Department of Ed, um, supplied the name of somebody from Department of Ed that might be able to support our teachers with that. And that might dovetail nicely with some other, um, thoughts that leadership are having about how to support teachers in, um, supporting diverse learners. Um, additionally, we thought that, um, that general ed teachers, special ed teachers could really benefit from being in PLCs together around kids. And that would also really enhance everybody's knowledge and practices around the general ed curriculum and access the agenda curriculum, et cetera. So those were some of the outcomes and recommendations that we'll be looking to for ways to implement. Um, especially compliance is good, 97%. And, um, then the last activity is just working on interviewing and hiring. But you can, and you can see where we are with different, um, employees in the statistics table. Other questions?
Joel?
Um, I saw him as a report, um, trying to fill positions. Um, Colleen, uh, where, where are we at with case manager positions? How many open students we currently have, district wide?
District wide.
Five.
Yep.
Sorry, is it on there?
Yeah, on that statistics side. No, that's okay. On the statistics one that you're looking at, all the way to the right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Is that all you had, Joel? Sorry.
Yeah, I sent that question, yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Colleen?
You're good. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, financials.
Follow-up question to that.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, you're, it's, it's all part of financials. Was that the indicator 14 post-school survey or is that separate from the root cause?
That's different.
So I will mention that Colleen did secure an additional grant for the district on the amount of $5,000. We were able to spend that by June 30th when it closed, so it was a quick turnaround. And I just want to extend a pat on the back.
Thank you.
That's how we roll. Um, we'll take all the money we can get. So thank you, Colleen. And then as part of my report, I just, um, things are working a little bit differently for this month. Um, I dropped some preliminary reports into your folder so you can see where I got these numbers. Um, but currently we stand at revenue of $16,322,848.76 on two expenses, currently tallied at $14,295,654.18. If it were to stay that way today in place, it creates a positive difference of $227,194.58, um, which should be your fund balance before trust funds, things that you voted on get taken out and put where they're supposed to. Um, I expect the number to change. In fact, it may go down a little bit. Um, I hope to be between 1.6, 1.8. Um, and I'll have a final report for you on the 22nd with all that information. Um, as it stands now, June's still open, so I expect that expense report to change. I just got revenue for food service from last month and I also, um, still have some revenues coming in that I have to enter, but they're smaller, so it's not gonna change the 16 million per se. But, um, it's significant in that it will change. So that's a prelim, preliminary number, but I didn't want to come with that one. In terms of some of the big things that we've been tracking, um, the board was able to successfully vote through some encumbrances. So we're prepared to go on, uh, some projects here that are lining up with SIR III. For SIR III, we're looking at, um, getting an approved budget here. That's gonna take us up to 3.1 million. You had 2.6 million approved budgeted. We just crossed the 2 million mark spent out of that budget. So it left like a $500,000 hole for this fiscal year that wasn't used. Um, we gotta try and find a way to get that done. Some of it, um, is gonna pop up with the accrual. We're gonna see some salaries accrue and take that number up a little bit more. But, um, the reporting for June is gonna hang out for SIR probably until at least midway through July, second to last week, and I hope to have everything, um, hopefully back to us and approved. They, um, we last submitted the grant to them for approval, uh, at the end of June. Uh, they came back and requested a few more edits on some of the items I had put in there, but, um, no more major removals, uh, or anything like that. Uh, I've made the adjustments, we resubmitted the grant. Roll over is the next part I wanted to cover. So we're working on rolling over the system. It's just a very arduous task. It requires a lot of labor, uh, intensive thought process, double checking, lots of lists and Excel sheets. And, um, it's going well, uh, to say the least. So we started this year in May, so it gave us a little bit of a bump to get this stuff done. Um, we have our summer pays, everything's set up like that moving into this week. And I'm working with our payroll clerk to finalize our first payroll and get that out the door for Thursday. Um, and then comes summer school pays, and then we have to get ready for the new contractual year, um, starting in August, uh, which is when I will line up our first discussions about budget as well. So we have plenty of time to start talking. Um, so moving into a little bit more of a proactive approach for this year, trying to get things set up in advance. But the other question I know is on everyone's mind is the audit. So we had our financial support back in the office last week. I spent the day with him again pulling records. We're actually able to satisfy a lot of things that, um, just couldn't have been found before. So there was a lot of stuff that was falling through the cracks. I was able to locate some of that for him and explain, um, things that had happened with the transition, with some of the other financial support that we've had in there. And he was able to get most of the identified items out of the way. Um, he has three major items left he needs to work on, and I think it's grant related. So we'll be working with him on that moving forward. Um, Jess reminded me, I think we have until September 1st to get that done, get it in, um, to the state. And that's done through a clearinghouse process, um, with the Fed. So that's where we're at, kind of with everything I've been tracking that's major. There's lots of little stuff going on too that we're managing, um, day to day. I'm sure Patty can tell you, it's like we're cross-eyed in there sometimes. So it's just making sure that we're staying on our toes and doing the best that we can. Our longtime administrative assistant Cheryl left us, so that, she left a big hole in the office. And, um, again, thank you for all you've done, Cheryl, uh, for the district.
Um, I believe Joel had mentioned it to Jim. I don't know if you were included on the email, but the financials that we have been posting.
Yes, yeah, I was notified this morning. Mae was left out and I posted that right away. Apologize to the community for anyone that was looking at that.
I just wanted to make sure I got to follow that one, so, perfect.
So Mae, Mae did get up there and then you'll be putting up June, Mackenzie?
June, once it's finalized. And I gave you guys each your preliminary report so you guys can see where I got the numbers. You know, I mean, they're not false, they're just gonna change. And I don't want to necessarily put out numbers that are not.
For the members of the board, Mrs. Mosley and I received, uh, an email from a taxpayer resident, with some, just questions about, uh, budgetary questions and, um, you know, some comments. And, uh, they weren't able to access me, but since that's up there, we're gonna keep it this point. There were several points made in that email, Mackenzie, which I forwarded to you and to Jim. Kid, I, you know, that just came in this morning, so I don't know if you've had a chance to dissect that at all, but.
Yeah.
Give, you know, give that some attention considering that it's someone that's, um, pretty budget savvy and, and I respect his concerns on this. So if we can take a look at some of the questions, the points that were made in that, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think one was just regarding the Spinkriler project, so I'm looking at that first and then I'll move down the list from there.
Sounds good. Anything else for Mac, from anybody?
Yeah, I just have something to bring up. So Greg has three things on his.
I just want to make sure that the audit is clear for everybody that's watching.
Yep.
Greg has three things on his plate.
That are bigger, more time consuming.
Sure. Is there anything that the auditors are waiting on besides those three things?
No, in fact, he told me that he's waiting on feedback from the volumes of information that he sent to close out the items that, uh, Mac was talking about. And he wants to wait on, um, the auditor's feedback before he moves on these last three. He doesn't anticipate it'll take long and mostly the wait was because of the holiday.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Uh, here, I have one more thing.
Yep.
Um, I've received an email from, uh, Mr. Kraster, uh, that he has been doing some work, uh, on the trustees and the trust lines, uh, in regard to some of our scholarships. Um, we recently sort of lined up the whole, um, Kewahajee scholarship, but, uh, he has lots of like some concerns about the GT scholarship. And, uh, I, I will forward that to you, Mac.
Yeah, please.
That may be something we need to partner with the trustees on to either clean up. I, I don't have it in front of me. Uh, but, you know, we, we're fortunate to have Mr. Kraster, who has obviously a law background, taking a look at these things and making sure that, uh, we'll be forward, we're, we're doing them correctly. So I'll, I'll forward you that information, but I, I'm gonna put that on our July 22nd agenda. So we can post the book, yeah, some of the concerns expressed, uh, regarding that scholarship and how it's made up. So I'll send you that information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright. SAU retreat outcomes.
I'd, uh, like to direct the board's attention to a summary doc that I provided to give you some insight as to the work that we did over three days. We met at the Primex facility at no cost to the district, uh, for three days in the end of, the end of June. And, uh, in terms of number one, supporting student success, I want you to know that that's what we're referring to now is our student management system. Because in part, we feel that the language that is used, um, sort of necessarily, maybe inferentially, drives the, the thinking behind managing student behavior. Um, so we're trying to be front and center around the idea that we're trying to promote student success. So over the course of the three days, as it states there, uh, the administrators met, to briefly review the workshops and materials that they had either read or participated in over the course of the school year to help inform, uh, the plan that we're looking to put together. That essentially is going to streamline and refine communication, define common tools to address and promote positive behaviors, uh, develop and promote awareness for student capacities for success, and to bring about a greater awareness of executive functioning skills. Um, and just as important, uh, looking for means to bring in, um, a greater level of student voice, um, in the overall process. The other thing that we looked at is formalizing a, both a staff and a student onboarding program. So, you know, the, the tendency in the business world, I guess, is when you hire someone, you spend a lot of time with them at the outset, and then the expectation is that they live happily ever after. Well, we're looking at a model that not only does that impart, but that we're going to continue, uh, interactions at the 30, the 60, the 90-day points, um, and maybe another point beyond. Because, um, in looking at some of onboarding studies, generally speaking, a new employee tends to make a decision around longevity, uh, with a new employer in the first 10 days of their employment. Uh, so we feel that it's really important, especially in the environment that we have now where it's basically a job seekers, uh, market as opposed to, you know, the other way around. And there are some colleges that are closing their, uh, education department doors due to a lack of enrollment. So it's really important that we take care of and manage the blessings of the resources that we have at all levels, from in-office help, paraprofessionals, teachers, and so on. Um, we also looked at, um, ways to improve school safety. So to make a long story short, um, emergency responders are trained in what's called the Incident Command System. Um, it's, it's essentially known as NIMS today, National Emergency Management. So what we want to do is make sure we're speaking the same language as the emergency responders and be as prepared as we can, um, to mitigate potential circumstances so that when the responders come on site, um, we can basically hand off a situation and just focusing, focus on managing our, our students to get the situation back to, to normal. And that also includes some of the technical measures that we're looking at, including TASTA, which has been a work in progress since before we arrived, um, as well as, uh, the security camera system. And there'll be more to come, um, on that. And in terms of, uh, effective use of time over the summer of '24, what the administrative team is doing is we're not just leaving the retreat as a. is we're not just leaving the retreat as a one-time-only, it's-all-done deal. Uh, what we're doing now is we've moved our, um, administrative team meetings to Mondays at one o'clock and we're focusing on, um, taking care of each of the items, um, that, that we have listed here. And, uh, we have some long-term goals that we're, we're considering. Um, we could talk about that at another time, but I wanted our, our emphasis for right now to be on what we're trying to accomplish over the summer. And, uh, I would direct your attention to the graphic that's on, uh, the second page of the handout. What we've done essentially is we've taken Maslow's hierarchy of needs and we've tried to equate it to, um, what we're doing as part of what we're calling, uh, promoting student success throughout the district. I'm open to questions if you have any. And I will say it's opportune that Kim arrived at the time that she did.
I don't have anything right now.
Do I have any questions? Nope, I think it's all great stuff. I love that you guys were all able to get together and go over this. I think it's really important, so.
I'd like to note the presenters that we did have who also came at no cost. It was our SROs who spoke about safety. Sue Johnson spoke to us remotely with regards to Power School and Data Management. And Christina Smalley came in person, uh, to talk about the proactive teaching of pro-social skills, which will be part of our, our overall student success plan. And I'm trying to quell some of the nerves that our administrators have because we want to fir- first and foremost, please our community, keep our students safe and let you as a board know that we're actively doing what you had asked us to do. Um, I think some of our administrators may unwittingly have thought that this has to be a signed, sealed, and delivered package um, by the end of the summer, but I'm trying to stress the fact that we're going to be presenting this to you in stages with the idea that we're, we've got your mission front and center, um, and that we will have a, a, a fully functional package at a date to be determined, and I will say sooner than later. I don't want to put a date on it right now because it is a work in progress. But just know that we're, we're doing what you had asked.
Excellent. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda, dare I say. I'm sure there's something we're forgetting, but, um, oh, while I'm thinking of it, this isn't unfinished, but, um, can we get a nameplate ordered?
Oh, okay.
I guess that's kind of unfinished, right? Um, anybody have any unfinished business that we may have forgotten about? All right. New business, after-school program. Erica, you're up.
We can, I.
Or I don't know how you want to.
Yeah, I don't know. We, we came to answer any questions you had. I don't know how you want to do this. I know there was another proposal on the table and.
For the, the benefit of the board and our viewing audience at home, um, we are looking to continue an after-school program. Um, so the board has two, I'm going to call it proposals, but please know they're not competitive in any way. Um, these are, um, from upstanding, um, organizations, starting first and foremost with Farmington Parks and Rec. Um, they have provided a one-page handout that essentially outlines what they're looking to do, um, as part of an after-school program starting in, in the fall of this year. Um, so they indicate things such as, um, they're looking to expand the program that they have. There's a waitlist for an after-school program. Um, we would have to revisit the question of use of Farmington buses, uh, which was something that was discussed in the past. And they, they've included in here cost of the program at seventy-five dollars a week. That would include snack and activities, um, that there's a part-time option as well for families. Uh, some of the activities that are described include outside play, games, imagination play, art, and so on. The program runs directly after school, um, each weekday until five-thirty P M. Um, and during the quote-unquote nice weather, the rec staff will pick the kids up and walk them to the rec department. And, uh, we'll be looking at the transportation question, uh, for winter months and rainy days.
How many people are on the waitlist currently?
How many kids?
Right now, we have twelve on the waitlist.
Can you, wait a minute, sorry. Yeah, just because nobody at home will be able to hear you.
Oh, I'm trying to, sure.
Sorry. I didn't mean to put you in the hot seat, but I want people to be able to hear you, so.
Um, we currently have twelve on the waitlist. Um, we do have forty-five registered for summer program. Um, of those families, a, a number of them have indicated, uh, that they're looking for after-school program. Um, of the forty-five summer camp families, we have, I will, uh, twenty-two, I think twenty-two are new to us this year. Um, and those are mostly, uh, kindergarten and first graders. And those parents have indicated that they are interested in after-school. Um, we haven't actually opened up anything for after-school program because we don't know how many spots to open. Um, they will be offered to our families that we currently have first, um, and then we would be pulling, um, off that waitlist. With the numbers that we can take right now without the busing, um, we will not be able to take all of our forty families, that forty-five families that we have currently, so it'll be a first-come, first-served basis, um, to those families. And then we'd be looking to open up more spots depending on the rest of that, so.
What would, what is your, like, max capacity of students?
For us, so.
Or, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's, so, we can do about twenty to twenty-four without busing. Um, it, the problem, it, it kind of depends on how many we have in each school.
Okay.
Because if we have to make two trips to Valley View, that second trip, we can only put enough kids that we can still pick up Henry Wilson at the same time. We can't make a third trip because then those kids are just standing outside with no supervision until we get to them, which isn't really like a great, safe plan to me.
Yeah, good idea, good idea.
If we have, you know, four from Henry Wilson, we can take nine more from Valley View. If we have eight from Henry Wilson, then we can only, you know, so we can only fit thirteen in the van, so.
Okay.
We do have a good amount of our, our one of the fourth graders that are already enrolled.
Y- yeah.
So we will see more.
Um, we do, we do have a good group right now of, they were third grade, going into fourth grade, um, that are looking to stay on. So that will limit the number at Valley View because we have to be able to get them. I know there's at least six, um, of those, of those would-be fourth graders that will be staying on.
So if you had the, moving to the bus discussion, if you had that, do you have a staff?
We do. We'd probably look to hire one more staff if we were going to take, fill all of those spots. Um, but we, we have hired for, um, summer, so.
The people there, there. Do you remember?
Well, I think you'd have a lot more families that would want to be on a waitlist, but I think they know that there already is a waitlist.
Correct.
So they're like, well, we're not even the boss.
Right, they, they, yeah, they just, they say, no, thank you and, and hang up.
Right.
There is a need.
Yeah, absolutely.
There are some families that want to stay in the loop.
Correct.
Because it's really, like, crucial to that.
Right. And what were, what was the timing that we did the busing last year? Do you remember?
Last year, they picked up the Valley View kids and dropped them off first, before the actual bussers got out.
No, I mean, like, the months of the year.
Um, it, we were looking from like November to April.
Okay.
Um, again, kind of give or take. Yeah, if it's really nice in April, you know, we'll, we'll start walking earlier. Um, but I think the biggest thing for us in having them walk is, like I said, they're little, they're kindergarten, they're first grade. They have all of their snow stuff.
Right.
If we get them to the rec and they're wet or they're cold, they're stuck there until mom or dad can come get them. Whereas if a kid's walking home, they can change, they get, you know what I mean? Um, so it, it is a little bit different. We'd also, on top of all of their snow stuff and their school stuff, they'd have to bring change of clothes as well. And it becomes too much for the little ones to carry, like, they, they just can't.
Right, yes, it becomes, yeah.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
We would need a lot of staff to walk kids, um, safely in a, in a line, uh, you know, on some of the main roads.
Right.
Does become an issue.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions? I know this was kind of food for thought at this point, right?
Yes. And if, if you'd like the Rochester Child Care rep to come, I can invite them for the next meeting. But you have all the information that they probably would share.
Mm-hmm.
Just note that they highlighted that at the time they created the doc, they didn't have liability and insurance information available. And if it's just a matter of following up on that point, I can certainly ask.
Their pricing is a lot higher than the rec.
Yes.
And they would be using our facilities, right?
They would. The rate is higher, as they gave some indication about pursuing a grant to help offset some of the costs.
And we, does it say in here how many students they would accept?
No.
Okay.
And for your benefit as well as for the folks at home, um, this came to us unsolicited. I think they got wind that the Y program was winding up and maybe they saw an opportunity.
Okay.
Um.
How soon do you guys need a decision?
Yeah, um.
I mean, we don't need it right off. We'll open up what spots we can fill and continue with our waitlist. And then if things change and there's opportunity, we'll start pulling from the waitlist when we have those changes. So, um, I mean, obviously, the sooner the better for families, but there's no, like, we have to have it by next week, you know, whatever. Whenever we have a decision, it's fine.
Okay. Good deal. Oh, yeah, Kim.
Um, so if you had a second to another option and talk to Mac and the people at the D O E, if we want to take some of those excess students and create an in-home, in-house program, take a look at that M C three, because they run that right out of the school.
Okay.
Um, and I, I guess we talked about maybe hiring a coordinator, an hourly coordinator to coordinate, um, the different enrichment activities and things that we could offer. And that's been go, that M C three has been going for over twenty years. Title-one school, so it all's flowing through the same channels that we have.
Grant-funded meeting for the personnel and, like, the staffing and.
Yep, they get a lot of volunteers as well. So they reach out to the community and, you know, running an eight-week session on health and wellbeing. Um, who would be interested in coming in, maybe doing a yoga group, doing a dance group, a music group, I don't know.
Right.
Poetry writing, whatever, you know, comes up. And as long as we keep it tethered to, like, outcomes, you know, in terms of enrichment, it should be considered a good one. So take a look at that, um, and, and they have their schedules on here and that could take some of the stress and numbers of the rec kids. And we could put the rec option, you know, if there were spaces.
Right.
Sign up for the waitlist, um, right on the form as kids pick which session they'd like to do. And there's, there's a component in the scheduling there where they, they do their homework too.
Yep.
Before they do their enrichment, so. Maybe get some N H S, National Honor Society students to, um, get their community services to.
Right.
Couple of kids come down and help with homework, um, and they'd be out by four to go.
Right.
The high school kids or whatever, unless they wanted to stay.
Right. All right. Anything else for us?
No.
Anybody else have anything?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, plane build projects for an upcoming meeting that.
That's just an F Y I, they would like an audience with the school board, potentially on July twenty-second, if that was okay with you.
Have a good night, everybody.
And, you know, if, if it is, I'll just, you know, let them know.
Um.
Yeah, we're going to have, I talked to Jim about this, we'll have on the agenda, they want to come visit us.
Okay.
Um, you know, we have had to turn over in one of the key positions, but.
Yep.
Um, I obviously have, we have full confidence in a, a curriculum coordinator. Um, Kim, are you able to be at that meeting?
She, oh, did you say Kim or Jim?
Kim.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Well, I'll be there anyway.
She actually just left, so, um, but we.
Well, I'll, soon as you've talked to her about it a little bit.
I will, yes.
All right.
I mean, to, to be, to your point, Jules, she's aware of the plane program. She's aware of the issues, uh, just not the specificity of this particular meeting date. I'll take care of that.
Awesome. All right. Back to public participation. And as everybody just walked out the door, so I, I'll take that as a no. Uh, we have some manifests to sign. Our next meeting is July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. And I will, we've already done that. I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session three.
Salute.
For safety and security.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.